Okay, we'll call the Chino City Council and the successor agency to the redevelopment agency to order. This is a workshop for today, June 13th. Please note that all council members are present. The first item on the agenda is public communication on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to discussion items. Number one, budget review. We'll have a staff report this afternoon from Linda Reich, our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a couple of objectives that we'd like to achieve. The first is, we're going to have two presentations on some of our maintenance that's primarily focusing on general fund reserves and how we can spend that to work on some of the deferred maintenance we've had over time. The second, and that's going to be focusing on our infrastructure as it relates to our public streets, our public parks. So those are the two. The second thing that we're going to focus on is, we're going to look at our general fund reserves and have a discussion about what those reserves should be moving into the future and how we can use those funds in the future. So today, we're going to have three presentations. We're going to start with Amr Jacker. He's going to talk about our pavement management plan and our asphalt program. Then we're going to have Sylvia Ovalo. She's going to talk about our parks. And then we're going to follow it up with Rob Burns, who's going to talk about the general fund reserves. So we'll get started with Amr.
Thank you, very good council members. I'm just going to walk through a presentation. You've seen some of this information before, and it was part of the budget presentation, but I'll go over some of that street-related funding issues. So you've seen this chart before. This is a chart of our city streets. It shows in red the streets that have failed. Those are the streets that need to be reconstructed. Basically, we have to take the asphalt down to the subbase and redo the street. That's about five percent of the streets that are in that condition. Another seven percent are marginal, that are just right next to them. Within the next two or three years, they would be red as well if we do not take care of them. The 10% or 12% of the streets are in fair condition, and the rest of them, what you see is green, different shades of green. So we have a lot of good streets, and that's because a lot of our streets are new and they've been built in the last 20 years. But as time goes by, if we don't maintain them, they would start sliding into yellow and then eventually into orange and red. And that's our concern, that if we don't spend the effort and the funds in the next few years, we would start seeing this bar chart shift towards the left. There's a lot more streets that need a lot more money to repair. It's always easier to maintain the streets by doing slurry seal, minor repairs, keeping them up than letting them fall into red. The difference is quite a bit. Instead of spending 25, 30%, we could do it with 25, 30% on the maintenance side, what it would take to do the repairs. So we do want to do a lot more maintenance, so we do not have a lot of streets that we need to reconstruct. Especially if it's a major street, it can cost several million dollars to do the repairs. This is, this just summarizes how we've been spending the money, and then what would it take to bring the streets up to different levels. On the left side, you see the condition of the street. The chart goes from 40% to 90%. We had discussed at previous meetings to try to keep this level at at least 75%. That's the orange line. Where we are today is at the green line, which is about four million or so. That's because even though we allocate six, seven million dollars a year to streets, not all of that money goes into the asphalt rehab. A lot of that goes into ADA compliance issues, curb and gutter, missing signals, other stuff that's incidental to the street repairs. And also, there is, as you've seen, there is project management costs, there's inspection costs that are included in all of the money that is allocated in the CIP. So if we were to keep that level at four, six million, we'd probably just get four million dollar worth of improvements in the streets. This shows what would happen if you increase the level of effort to, for example, to get to 70%. We would have to do additional money. It would be close to five million, six million dollars just to get to that 70 level. The 70 level is just bare minimum. We do not want to fall below 70%. And this is, again, this is a map of the city streets. It shows where those, the colors indicate what was shown on the bar chart. You have red streets. There's very few, you see very few red streets, quite a bit of yellow, as you can see, spread around, but a lot of it is green. So the street conditions is good wherever it's shown in green. This is just a few pictures of what the streets look like. You know, you see a very poor street. That street is pretty much failed. There's no way to save this. We just have to grind this. Sometimes, we can grind an overlay. We can grind the street down to two inches or three inches, come back and put asphalt on top of it. But some of these streets are not even, we can't even save the streets. We'll have to actually take all the asphalt out and go down, redo the subbase and redo the street. The one in the poor condition can go both ways. We can have either a repair where we have one inch or two inches of overlay. Some of these streets, if the alley gearing is far enough, we can crack seal and slurry. That adds life to the street. And the excellent is one of the streets on the right side. That's how we would like our streets to look, all of them. Our really non-general fund sources of street repairs come from state funding and SBCTA. And there's a list of the, there's some of the projects that are listed over here. What we do is, we take that money and we kind of apply it to different projects. We get, and there is some general fund contribution that the city makes. For this year, we have a few projects coming up. We have rehab on College Park. We have local street rehab, that's about 2.5 million. Eurobus Street Improvement, that's joint project with the improvements that are going on there. There's about 450,000 we're spending on that. And then again, for 24, 25, we have 3.1 million allocated to the local street rehab. This chart basically sums up what it would need to get our streets in a better condition. But you see, the blue section below is a couple of sources of funds that we have. So roughly, we're putting in about five million this year into the streets. What we really want to add is about 12 million, 11.8 million. Now, 11.8 million does not include anything that's concrete work, project management, any soft costs. That's another 3 million. So roughly, we should be at 15. So a shortfall every year is $10 million just to get to that 75% level. These numbers are in to raise dollars, but as inflation grows, that 12 million will just rise. They'll be higher in the upcoming years. We're anticipating a little bit of growth in the revenues because the taxes do grow from SBCTA that we receive and from the state as well. But overall, we believe that the city should be spending in the range of 14 to 16 million a year to keep the streets at a level which is acceptable for our city. And these are the two sources of funds that I talked about. That's RMRA, which is a state funding, and then MURI, which is SBCTA funding. SBCTA also, there's another, SBCTA does expire. The MURI is, it's only till 2040. So if they do not extend that, we will not get that money. So that'll be another shortfall of another couple of million or $3 million based on where the numbers are in 2040. But we're expecting that to be extended. If it's extended, then we will keep getting that money. But if it's not extended, then in about 17 years, that money will not be available. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Amr, I have a question. What is the average cost to completely reconstruct, say, a mile of road?
It's very difficult to answer on an average cost basis because it's, the example would be, we reconstructed, when we reconstructed Riverside Avenue, it cost us about $5 million to do that section.
How long was that section?
That section was about half a mile.
Half a mile?
Yeah, and then we're looking, because there's a lot of work on the side. But when we went to construct a similar section, which is the Prado Street, that was about two and a half. But you can see, there was not a lot of concrete work with it. So it depends on the streets. The one work that we did on Grand and Pipeline, that's about $3 million. So you can kind of get a feeling for it. Now, if it's a local street, you know, we can do a lot more. But what really is difficult to put down, you know, our streets, some of them are very wide, some of them are very narrow, some of them require, you know, there's trucks on the streets. All of those things have to be accounted for. But it would take about four or $5 million to do each mile in our city. And again, depending on what type of street it is.
Because sometimes, I know I'm asked that question, you know, by a citizen. What does it cost to do a street? So, you know, I'd like to give them some kind of rounded off number for something that they could maybe grasp.
We can, I can calculate the lane mile. That might be more reasonable calculation. We can take a lane, a 12-foot lane, and say, what would it take to construct a mile in our city? And then we can add the incidental cost, you know, concrete work, and then project management. I'll get that number to you.
Okay, just, you know, kind of a rounded, just something that we can tell people.
Yeah, so it would be a lane mile. So it would be, if it's a two-lane street, it'll be twice as much. If it's a four-lane street, that'll be four times the cost. I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I have two questions. So in looking at the projects that we have slated for next year, it said that the joint project with the Chino Unified School District at $450,000, but that is money that we received from the developer to do that work, correct? It's on?
We did receive the money from them, and I believe we also allocated some of our money.
Okay, so we're going to put additional money on top of the money that the developer gave us?
That is correct, because the developer is paving a portion of it themselves, then they're doing, they're helping us with whatever's done on the south, and then there is some improvements that we had already funded, a plan to fund on our side. So we'll complete the whole street. Our goal is to pave from the house that's just north of that development, the both sides of the streets, because the east side is also not in good condition. So we don't want them to age differently. We'd like to have a uniformed street. So we're going to be putting some of our money that wasn't accounted for in the original budget to finish it, because it's way beyond what developer had agreed to contribute.
Okay, and then the last one is, so if we fix our roads with slurry seals and are able to make sure that they stay in good working order, that's what doesn't trigger the ADA compliance? Because once we have to grind an overlay, is that what triggers any ADA issues that may be on that road?
That is correct. So the slurry seal itself doesn't trigger ADA. It's the overlay and reconstruction.
So it's beneficial if we get on these streets right away, then we don't trigger anything additional, such as additional costs with ADAs?
That is correct, and we do, even with the slurry seal projects, we do take care of some of the ADA. Because when we go out there and we find missing ramps and stuff, it's just prudent to go ahead and put the ramps in. We do also, what we've been doing with the slurry seals, we've been striping them, you know, we've been putting thermoplasts instead of paint, so that's an added cost. So we're not just doing the minimum, but you're right, we don't trigger some of the ADA requirements, but we do try to do some of that and we try to do more work. So it does take a little more money than what's shown in there to make the street look nice. And even if we slurry it, we do want the signs to be new, we want the striping to be new. But we can, if we keep the maintenance, if we do more of the slurry projects and we do more crack sealing, we can save on some of the concrete work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kurt?
Amr, as part of our pavement management plan, does that ever include actually grinding the street after a certain period of time? So we slurry, seal, we slurry, seal, we slurry, seal. At any point after so many years, do we go back and then grind it down and start over to rebuild the road? Is that part of that, or is that a typical process? Or if we could just stay up on the slurry seal, we won't ever have to worry about grinding it down again?
The average life of a street is roughly 30 years. That's just the life of it. We can extend it another 10, 12 years. When we slurry it, actually, let's just start with the slurry seal. If we come back five, 10 years after the street was installed, we slurry it, the slurry is just a paint on top. So we crack seal it to make sure the water doesn't get in. That helps, because now the water doesn't get in and the crack doesn't spread. So normally, what happens is, once there's a crack, after the rains, the water will go down into the subbase. When the heavy truck comes by, a trash truck or something else comes by, it just breaks a little more, little more of the street, and then just that crack spreads, and that's all you see. So we try to contain the crack by slurry sealing it. Then we crack seal it, we slurry it. The slurry itself wears off, so we don't have to grind it off, because the slurry is just a paint. So after three or four years, it just wears off. It just is completely gone. We come back and re-slurry it, and we can do that several times. We can extend the life on the local streets to up to 50 years, if we do it right. And on the major streets, we would have to go back and grind, grind it down, like you said, maybe three to six, three inches to four inches, and then come back and repave.
But after about 30 years, you say, after about 30 years, we're going to have to take that all the way down and start new. Is that correct? Grind it down and then build the road, basically, put in new asphalt?
Yes, if you slurried it and if you maintained it, in 30 years, we can come back and do a two-inch overlay, for example. If we didn't maintain it, we didn't slurry it, then instead of doing a two-inch overlay, you have to take all the asphalt out, come back and recompact the base and redo it. So the cost of that is about triple of what it would take to just do a two-inch.
Right, but eventually, we're going to have to grind that whole street down after a period of time.
Yes.
Okay, and we're looking at about 30, maybe up to 50 years, depending on what our upkeep is over the years, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Chris?
Yeah, well, first, Amr, I'd like to say just congratulations on a partial retirement. It was disheartening to get that email, but that was interesting. Second, these, when we talk about the street pavement, does that include alleyways at all, or is alleys a completely separate topic?
So alleys are separate from here. We do get about 600,000 to 800,000 a year from the trash contract. Part of their obligation is to give us money for the alleyways to keep them open for the trash recovery. We've been, and then there's some CDBG funding, but that's not shown in the stuff you saw here. And then there's some general fund contribution. But the alleyways are not part of the street rehab projects. We've been working on the alleys that we have, and our goal is to finish in the next five years, finish all the alleys in the whole city. And I think we have separate funding for that. It would be nice to have additional funding there, and we could probably do them faster. But in about five years, we'll be starting back at where we were about five years ago and starting to overlay or rehab or slurry the alleys again. So that's an ongoing thing.
And additional funding, I mean, what, is there a number? Is there a number?
For the alleys?
Yeah.
I believe if we spend, we get about 600,000 to 800,000 a year. There's 200 from CDBG. I think it would be nice to spend about 1.3, 1.4 million on the alley, so we'll short there about 600,000. It'd be nice to have additional, half a million or so.
Okay, thank you.
Karen? I think Chris brings up a good point, Mayor, that maybe it's time for us, we've let a lot of our alleyways, I think, get to conditions in certain areas of the city that would be nice for us to actually include a figure for that moving forward, so we can properly maintain those moving forward for people. So I don't know what that figure is, Amr, but hopefully, you can bring that back to us later on. I know you said it'd be nice to spend about 1.6 or something, so there's that comment. And just, I don't have any other questions except for that. I'm very pleased to see that our staff has worked on this. I think us taking a hard look at our street repairs and our proposed maintenance plan, it's not just a part of, we've talked a lot about getting the roadway, the road software system that's going to help us project which streets need to come up in order of priority for paving. But I also think now, really taking a hard look at what it really does cost for us to maintain our streets and potentially some of our curb and gutter at a level that we're proud of as the city. I talk about this a lot. Sometimes, the city is judged not just on its public safety component, but also the maintenance of its streets, signs, curbs, gutters, and different things that help to keep a city looking proper and functional and well-maintained. This is a lot of money that we're talking about here. We're talking about basically doubling this fund. But I also would just like to make the comment, I know that we just went through and cataloged a lot of these streets with the help of a professional. And I would actually probably hate to see what a very, very poor street really looked like. I can think of a couple in the city, because when I do drive some that they say are just kind of marginal, when I drive them, I think to myself, hey, this is a really, you know, a street that's in dire need of repair, even when they call it marginal. So I know they're the experts, but, you know, sometimes I look at some of that feedback on that. If it's not, maybe it's just on the cusp of marginal and then, right, maybe it just made the cusp of the lower end of marginal, I guess, is where I guess those streets fall. So thank you, Amr, for your hard work on this.
You're welcome. And some of those streets, you know, there's sections that are marginal, sections that are failing. So it's not always that the whole street is reacting the same way, just based on the subbase or based on the use. You know, it can have different levels of failure. One of the, I mean, one of the important things about, you know, at least the road maintenance is actually knowing what, how much we are not doing, because it just quantifies how far we're falling behind, which is, you know, easy to do that with this charts and figures that we have. But at least we know how much is, how much we're short, so we can work on it. So I think if there's anything positive out of this is that at least we know what we need to look for as far as the money is concerned. Because what's not included in here is, this is just the pavement. Pavement isn't the whole street. It's the signs, it's the striping, it's the road maintenance. We're probably going to need another 3 million, 2 to 3 million a year in road maintenance when we are, when we take over all the streets. So there is, there is going to be staffing issues that we need to address. So on top of just the street rehab and street repairs, we also need maintenance money. We also need money for signs. We've been putting, we've been putting 300,000 a year into signs, but it's way short of what we need to get the city looking much better than it looks today. There's a lot of signs that are missing, there are a lot of signs that need to be improved. There is sections of sidewalk that need to be redone just for the aesthetic, even if it's not for ADA, some of them are just not looking good. So there is a lot more to it that this does not capture. And so that's why it's important to just keep an eye on how much money we need to spend and try to spend more money to try to get these things done, because it's not all of it. This is just the portion of what we need to get done. Striping is another portion, and as I said, and signs and all of the others. And the traffic signal itself, I mean, those are not included in this, and those are a big cost item.
This is really depressing. Can you go back to that chart that shows? I think I'm going forward. That one. So 12 million is just the pavement?
Yes.
Okay, so another million and a half for alleys?
About half a million for alleys.
Okay, another half a million for alleys. Another 3 million for signs and striping and sidewalks and that, do you think?
It's about, if you, there's about 3 million for concrete work and soft costs. So that's 12.5, 15.5. It would take another 2 and 1/2 million with additional staff and for signs and for striping. So we're looking at 18 million dollars a year to maintain our street.
Thanks for making our day. Holy cow. Okay, so the real need, if we really want to get, we're hoping to get, isn't 12 million, it's 18 million?
Well...
If we had that money, could we really do the projects, do you think?
Yes, so definitely, we could do the projects. The 12 million, 18 million is the need. We do have about five or six, so that, the shortfall is about 12 million.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts? Thank you, I guess. That's shocking, isn't it?
It is. All the deferred maintenance. We used to call it kicking the can down the road.
Well, it's not even, you know, Karen just made a comment, you know, deferred maintenance, kick the can down the road. And I was thinking about something that Linda said to me today, and that's, you know, hindsight's worth a million dollars. You can always look back and say, should've, could've, would've. But, and I'm sure 20 years from now, people will look back to this time and say, they should've, could've, would've, you know. You do what you can do with the assets that you have at the time, given the priorities and what you know. You know, it's just things build up over time. But, you know, I'm sure there were reasons. I mean, it was a big deal when Earl Elrod, years and years and years ago, insisted that we put $2 million a year into the streets. I mean, that, at that time, was major, you know, when you look at 20 years ago. $2 million was a big amount. It wasn't enough, but we thought it was enough at the time. And again, decisions we're making now, 20 years from now, they'll look back and say, why'd they do it that way? They should've done this, so we do what we can do. Okeydoke, next, parks.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Today, I would like to share with you the infrastructure needs related to parks and recreation facilities. In 2022, the council adopted the Parks and Facility Master Plan. This is a roadmap to help us maintain our parks and facilities today and into the future. We are deficient in several ways. We are behind in maintenance. Aging facilities need attention, and we are not prepared to accommodate for new growth. The city has over 254 acres of parkland, which includes 27 parks, 19 city-maintained and six HOA-maintained, and 80,000 square feet of community recreation space, which includes 10 recreational facilities. The master plan identified that we are deficient 25 acres of parkland and 67,000 square feet of community recreation space. With the building of the new Preserve Community Center, we will only be deficient by 25,000 square feet of recreation space. A 10-year plan has been developed that includes strategies to maintain the existing parks and facilities at an acceptable level of service. Years of deferred maintenance and lack of funding allocations for improvements have resulted in the deterioration of these valuable public assets. Due to the age of these facilities, the master plan addressed the need to put in place an infrastructure and recreational equipment replacement program. So for example, the suggested life cycle of our playground equipment is 15 to 20 years. The last time the city conducted a citywide playground replacement project was over 20 years ago. At that time, we had a total of 18 playgrounds maintained by the city. We now have 19, which includes Shady Grove Park that was developed in 2005. Some of the projects, I'm sorry, I think I, excuse me. Some of the projects included in the 10-year plan are, the six parks listed here are, the six parks listed here are in need of playground and pavilion replacement. The projects include replacing the playgrounds with all-inclusive playground equipment, adding playground shaded structures with lights, replacing the picnic pavilions, and addressing accessibility. Ayala Park is the most visited park in Chino. The pavilions are reserved every weekend for children's birthday celebrations and family gatherings. Last year, the North Pavilion was replaced, and the South Pavilion and Playground are also in need of replacement. Including in the 10-year plan are additional amenities to Ayala Park that have been placed on hold for over 15 years. When the park was expanded in 2006, additional amenities were included in the plans, but they have been deferred due to the lack of funding allocations. The amenities include a dog park, tennis and pickleball courts, basketball courts, parking, and a new playground and pavilion at the southwest end of the park. Also, on the list is the Monta Vista Park expansion improvement. Also, on the list is the Monta Vista Park expansion improvements. This park is the home of our teen center and the popular splash pad. In order to expand the park, the city purchased the vacant property next to the park. The area is ready to be developed if funds are made available. The expansion includes additional parking and a green space area to maintain a passive area next to the homes to border the park. The Pumpkin Patch Community Garden has been closed for over eight years. This garden is located in downtown Chino, within walking distance of the season's senior housing. The garden needs accessibility improvements, such as entrance into the garden, a defined path to the garden plots, and several raised garden beds. The current community garden located at Riverside Drive is very popular. We have a list of interested gardeners waiting to reserve plots. Also in the ten-year plan is the Chino Youth Museum interior improvements. This award-winning museum provides interactive learning for over five thousand children and their families per year, and is in need of replacement of the carpet and upgrades to existing exhibits, but will trigger accessibility compliance. In regards to funding, the ten-year plan estimates a budget of forty point five million dollars for existing facilities and park improvements. This reflects a commitment to enhancing the quality of the parks and facilities, ensuring that they remain attractive, safe, and clean, and accessible recreational spaces for the community. This financial plan does not address the deficiency needs of additional parkland and community recreation space. With adequate funding, we will allocate resources for maintenance schedules and necessary repairs, enhancing the longevity and usability of these spaces for generations to come. By addressing accessibility concerns, upgrading facilities, and enhancing recreational amenities, the parks and facilities will provide an enriched experience for visitors of all ages and abilities. This completes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to come?
Yeah, I have a question, particularly for Ayala Park, but there's been other parks that, different residents, and, you know, at sports, you know, organization leaders have reached out and asked about solar lights. I know for a long time, that's not necessarily something the city pursued. It was premature when, you know, some of these, solar was coming out. And I don't know where we're at with, you know, solar technology, and if that's something that, you know, we are, you know, we are planning to install on some of our parks. The argument is that, you know, it does drag down the cost or energy cost. How true that is, I'm not exactly sure, but I want to ask, is that a part of our plans, our park infrastructure?
I'll take that. A few years ago, I think the Finance Department did a complete survey on solar on our different facilities and parks, and we didn't find that it was beneficial for Ayala. That's correct, right? So there wouldn't be a savings for us as far as energy. And as far as having solar, like sports field lights, the technology's not available for that yet. That's correct, right, Caroline?
Yes.
So, and, you know, as we look at upgrading our lights or what we do, we're always looking at what's the most efficient and effective way to do it. You know, you'll see, like, you can put a garden light in your house, right, and it has the solar that comes during the day, and then at night you can have light. That technology's not available for sports field lighting yet. We are converting most of our parks to LED, which is a savings for us. But that's something that we look at, like, we're just now doing the solar at the police station, because that made sense for us. There was a cost savings. It didn't cost us upfront. So we're always looking at what's the best way to do that. And we'll continue to look at that, and if it becomes available and the technology is there, we'll certainly look at that in the future.
Can I add? The LED lighting, we are looking at converting the skate park lights, as well as the Villa Park baseball field and the soccer field lights at Ayala with LED. That is part of the ten-year plan as well.
What about solar, though, on the pavilions, the new pavilions that are being built, which would keep them lit at night for safety reasons?
That's something to look at, yes.
I mean, it seems to make sense to put them on the roof.
Yeah, most of the pavilions have lighting already, but looking at solar, I think would make sense.
Can you bring that back to us?
Sure.
Okay. Chris, anything else? Mark, you have anything? Karen?
No, ma'am.
Curtis?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. And you made a point that this does not include any new parks, correct?
Correct, no, new parkland.
Have we looked at all on priority of acquiring parks and when we're gonna bring that forward?
Yes, we started looking. We have a list, so yes, we'll plan of bringing it forward to the council.
Because that was one thing, many, many, many years ago, gosh, I would say in the, gosh, I don't know, maybe sixties or seventies, there was a lot of parkland that was purchased, even though it wasn't developed for, gosh, thirty years. But at least they purchased it and reserved it, and so that's why we have a lot of the parks that we have now. If we don't do something, this infill and all this building, we're not gonna have any new parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. So today we want to talk about the city's reserves. What are they and how much do we need? So first, you know, what are the purpose of reserves? So funds, reserves are needed basically to get the city through events that have a negative financial impact. So it's basically a bank account that we maintain just to get us through any negative financial events. But the question then becomes, how much does the city need in reserves to get through these events? And so that's what we want to talk about a little bit today. So we've talked a couple times in the budget process about, you know, what is an industry standard? The GFOA, the Governmental Financial Officers Association, has established a best practice that a minimum of two months of operating expenses should be maintained. Sorry. Okay, there we go. And so when we look at a two-month minimum, if you look at these targets here based on our current budgets, ongoing operating expenses, the two months would be about eighteen point seven million. And I've listed out a number of months. Each month is about nine point four million dollars. So we can look at all the different targets, but how do we pick a target? That's kind of the question. So basically, GFOA is trying to encourage agencies to have kind of a renewed thinking on reserves. Because you want to think of, they want agencies to think of reserves as kind of an insurance policy. And so what you do is you identify your risks, and cities face different risks. Therefore, the reserves or insurance levels that cities maintain should be different. So common risks for cities could be like natural disasters. But cities on the East Coast are gonna have a different need for reserves for natural disasters than cities on the West Coast will. Cities in the North versus cities in the South, so cities are gonna have different needs based on the natural disasters that they face. Also, economic downturns, that's a risk that cities face, getting through tough economic times. Also, new development housing crashes, as we experienced in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. So cities that are fully built out, bedroom communities, they don't really face this risk. But cities that have a lot of developable land, that depend on development-related revenue, that is a risk for these cities, and we're one of those. Also is the loss of top sales tax producers. If your sales tax base is heavily dependent upon one or two producers, then you can face significant risks if that sales tax producer decides to go to another state, another city. And so you have to look at that. And then there is law enforcement liability. If events happen, you know, you could face a lawsuit, and that can be pretty significant. So there's different methodologies for determining the level of insurance needed. So what if we looked at reserve levels that are a range instead of a single point? So again, we've talked about two months, four months, six months, so that's just a single point. But what if we said something like, you know, we want to maintain reserves between fifteen and twenty-five percent of annual revenues or annual expenditures? What if we want to set it at eighty to a hundred percent of prior year development-related revenues? What if we wanted to say fifty to sixty percent of annual sales tax revenue? And basically, the advantage of that is a range can accommodate the views of both risk-averse individuals and risk-tolerant individuals. Because if you set a range that's, say, between twenty-five and, or let's call it fifteen and twenty-five million, one person who is less risk-averse is gonna be happy with the twenty-five million. One person who is more tolerant of risk is gonna be okay with the fifteen million. But if you set it at a range, you know, as long as you're in that range, then that keeps everyone happy. And if you fall outside that range, then you know that you have to take some sort of action. But also, what if we looked at it another way and said, well, what if reserve levels were the sum of our known risks? So in other words, if we looked at new development during the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight housing crash, the city lost about ten million dollars over the course of two years. So we dropped from eleven million to one million in development-related revenue. And so that's about a ten million dollar hit. So what if we said, okay, well, that's a risk to the city? Also, what if we looked at the loss of our largest sales tax producer? So that could be a six million dollar hit. If we looked at potential earthquake damage, that could be a ten million dollar hit. And if we looked at law enforcement liability, if there were a couple of significant events, we could look at another ten million dollar hit. So we total those together, and we say, well, maybe our reserve should be the sum of those risks that we believe that we would face. And so in this instance, it could be thirty-six million dollars.
That new development crash, ten million dollars, that was back on two thousand and seven, eight?
Yeah.
What is it now?
We're budgeted to get eleven million dollars.
It's about the same.
About the same, yeah. And so there's several considerations if you look at summing your risks. You know, some risks last several years. So if we lost the top sales tax producer, that's not gonna be just a one-year hit. That's gonna go on for the foreseeable future. And so you want to try to think and account for that. Also, if you sum all your risks, you can actually overestimate your need, because it's very unlikely that all those things are gonna occur at once. So you don't need all that money, because one may happen this year, one of those events may happen in five years. And so you don't really need to add them all up and maintain that amount, potentially. And then factoring a probability would allow, you know, some reduced level from the sum of those risks. If you think, you know, I've got an eighty percent chance of an economic downturn, I've only got a twelve percent or fifteen percent chance of an earthquake, and so you kind of set it based on your probabilities. So, and when we look at reserves as insurance, you know, we also want to look at how are we currently protected from some of these risks that we have? And so in our proposed budget for the next two years, we have our internal service funds. So we maintain about sixteen million dollars of reserves in our internal service funds. The largest is our equipment replacement fund, and that's about eight million dollars. So, you know, let's say, well, that money's being accumulated to replace vehicles on an ongoing basis year after year. But let's say there was a major earthquake, the PD fell into the sixty freeway and wiped out, you know, a hundred of their vehicles. This fund would be able to be used to replace those vehicles. Now then, we want to look at annually rebuilding that, because we have other vehicles that need to be replaced. But this could be viewed as an insurance policy against a major catastrophic event like that. We also have our general liability and workers' comp fund. That holds about three million dollars. So that three million dollars can be looked at as our self-insurance retention amount. So if an event did occur, we have insurance, but we're self-insured to a certain level, so that can be used to cover that self-insurance part, and the insurance kicks in. And then, you know, the insurance would pay for it up to a certain point. And then we would probably have to look at general fund reserves to service that liability beyond those two amounts. We also have two million dollars for pensions. That's in our employee benefits fund. You know, so if we were to see a huge spike in pension benefits, you know, that money would be available. We have building maintenance fund where we keep about a million.
Rob, go back to the pensions. Is that over and above what we know we have to pay every year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. All these are above what we do pay regularly on an annual basis.
And why is that accumulated?
Well, these amounts we target every year based on council's input from about ten years ago. Council said we'd like to see these levels of reserves in these internal service funds. So we annually adjust what we bring into these internal service funds to kind of get at these levels. So if, in other words, in the pensions one, we had three million dollars, then we would charge all the funds less money to draw down to the two million. If we were short, say we had an event in the general liability account and it drew down two million, then we would start charging all the other funds more money to start building that back up. So we kind of play with that every year to target the amounts that council had established as what they'd like to see.
Okay.
And then again, we have money in the building maintenance, and in the computer systems, that's our central services, internal service fund. So if something were to go haywire, a power surge knocked out some of our servers and such, we would have almost a million dollars to be able to replace that equipment. So those minimize some of the risks that the city faces. On top of that, we have our insurance coverages that we carry. So the city carries commercial property insurance, which is basically our buildings. We carry equipment insurance. We carry employee theft and crime insurance. We have general liability, which includes errors and omissions, and then law enforcement. We have workers' comp insurance, and then cyber liability. So all these play a factor in mitigating the risks that the city faces. So the risks that we don't have covered beyond the things I've just mentioned are essentially revenue losses, which would be economic downturns. We don't have any kind of insurance for that. Loss of a large sales tax producer, there's no insurance or funds accumulated for that, other than what we're talking about now, which would be the general fund reserves. And then earthquake damage. So, you know, if a major earthquake hit, none of our insurance policies cover earthquakes, and so the city would have to fund those repairs.
Now, Rob, when we talk about a major earthquake, I know we do have to pay a portion of it, but some of that will be given to us by, once they declare a state of emergency and FEMA kicks in money and everything else. I mean, we're not gonna be going at this by ourselves, correct?
I would think that would be correct. It just depends on the severity of the earthquake and how much money would be available, you know. Maybe we would get a small amount, maybe we wouldn't. We really don't know. It just depends on the severity of the event. I think if we look at some of the fires that occurred in the last few years in California, I'm hearing that, you know, there's not much money available for those people, even though they get some from the federal government. You know, they can't rebuild their homes. And so, you know, that's something we need to make sure we're, you know, thinking about, because we just don't know what's gonna be available. But usually on large disasters, the federal government steps up and provides some assistance. So we just don't know how to quantify that.
I was also told today that a lot of the insurance companies now are leaving California, and it's becoming harder and harder to get even, for example, car insurance.
Yeah.
And home insurance, that they're just not taking on new policies or they're canceling existing policies. Do we face that, do you know?
I don't know in relation to earthquake damage, but, you know, I know it's very expensive to get earthquake coverage.
True. This is just normal insurance.
Yeah.
People can't even, they can't get insurance.
Yeah. I've heard the same thing about Florida. You know, they have all the hurricanes. And so I've heard that it's very difficult to get insurance there as well, so.
So I do know that, because it came out of the PD for a period of time, it was part of the hazard mitigation plan, right? We mitigate against earthquake and, you know, flooding here particularly in Chino. That's part of the tracking of all that is for FEMA. It's just, nobody can ever predict what those funds will be available. But that's part of the hazard mitigation plan, is having all those policies in place that we can be eligible for those funds if you have one of these events in the past.
Okay.
So if
So if we look at assessing what our risk is, GFOA does provide a reserve calculation worksheet on their website. And so I kind of ran through that worksheet. I put in our known risks, and then you evaluate those known risks. It's, it's a very simple spreadsheet. It's not scientific by any means, and it's just based on, you know, my general knowledge. But when I put in the information mostly about PD liability, earthquakes, revenue loss from economic downturns, the, their calculation determines that we're low to moderate risk as a city. When they say low to moderate risk, that means that they recommend that we maintain reserves somewhat higher than the minimum recommendation. And that minimum recommendation was two months. So based on that, it would maybe be one of these three scenarios. It could be three months of expenditures, which for us would be about twenty-eight point one million. It could be seventeen to twenty-five percent of operating revenues. And that's the range that they gave based on a low to moderate risk. And that would be eighteen to twenty-six million. And then, based on the earlier slide, if we just kind of summed our known risks, you know, that could be thirty-six million. But again, I just want you to realize those are just kind of my throwing out numbers. It's not based on enough information to actually say thirty-six million dollars would cover everything we need. But this is kind of the range based on our low to moderate risk for, as the city of Chino. So that kind of concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
What are our current reserves?
The current reserves are seventy-two million as we enter into twenty-three, twenty-four.
And right now, the way the budget looks, that's going to come to us. I know we're using part of those reserves. How much is predicted that we're going to use?
Well, at the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, so the end of the two-year budget cycle, I believe we're at fifty-six point eight million. If everything shakes out as per the budget. And if I go back to the slide of months, so you'll see that's about six months.
So in two years, we'll be down to six months?
Yes. And based on our long-range projection, where I have included the projects that Sylvia has discussed with you, as well as a seven million dollar funding for the projects that Almer discussed with you, you know, those reserves drop very quickly.
And if those are included in the upcoming two-year budget, what would the reserves be at the end of the two-year budget?
Well, Sylvia's projects are included in the two-year budget. The seven, we're seven million shortfall for two years. So, you know, we'd have to notch it down another fourteen million. And again, that doesn't cover, the seven million doesn't cover the ADA concrete work that Almer was discussing. It doesn't include the additional alley work that was discussed. So, you know, it could be talking fourteen plus six million plus another million. So that's seven, twenty-one. So we're down to the forty-five million, no.
No.
Thirty-four million, thirty-four million dollar range.
So if we include the projections that Almer gave us, we'd be down to less than four months reserves?
Yes.
In two years?
Yeah, and I'm trying to get my, here we go. Okay, sorry. If I go back to kind of the final slide. So the thirty-four million would still be pretty much on the high range of these recommendations based on our low to moderate risk.
And the two million below the sum of known risks?
Yeah.
Well, before I say anything, questions or comments? It seems if, if we want to put emphasis behind our desire to keep up the streets like we keep talking about, then it seems that it would be prudent to include the projections from Almer, to do the concrete signs and all of that, which for two years is about twenty-four million. It was about twelve million a year?
Yeah, it was fourteen million plus an additional six million, and then one million for the alleys. So that'd be twenty-one million.
Twenty-one million, which would bring us down to the thirty-four. So if the council adopted or spoke in support of covering the sum of known risks, a range of thirty-four to thirty-six million, we could have two years of very intense street repair and cut our, cut our reserves in half. We'd go from seventy-two million down to less than half, thirty-four million. Now that also takes us below, I know there's a, a trigger point at fifty million, right?
Yeah, that provision is looking at being removed at the budget adoption because that was based on salary negotiations years ago and controlling personnel costs. So the thought is that the budget that's going to be presented to you next week, that provision would be removed.
Now, I, you probably can't exactly predict this, but we were able to exist pretty pain-free by not hiring, freezing positions during the Great Recession, right? If, if that hit again, and we drew this down to the thirty-four million in two years, say a Great Recession hits again and we're down to thirty-four million, would we be able to do the same thing? Would we be able to exist by freezing positions and, and not having layoffs? Because we were very, very careful not to have any layoffs.
Yeah. I think the city would fare well. And during the last recession, we had one year of loss at three point one million dollars. There's different kinds of recessions. The, the housing recession was somewhat unique in that it was almost fully concentrated just on housing. And so we were able to adjust quickly because we didn't need any people doing housing activities in the city. So though we didn't lay anyone off, through attrition in other positions in the city, we moved housing people into other positions in the city, avoided layoffs, but yet reduced costs by eliminating forty full-time positions. I think it was forty-one full-time positions during that time. So we were able to adjust to that pretty quickly, and so the financial impact was pretty minor. A general overall economic recession is probably a little more problematic because, you know, when people think of recessions, they think everyone's out of work. Well, no, it's usually just like, there's an additional ten percent of people that aren't working. The other ninety percent, they still are working, they still want services. So the revenues are reduced, but the service demands remain pretty constant. So that's a little harder to deal with. That's kind of what happened in ninety-one, ninety-two, I think. You know, so there's different kinds of scenarios, you know, so. But thirty-six million dollars would last a while, you know. And, and again, if you look at all your known risks, they're not all going to occur at once. You know, an economic downturn is going to be happening, but it's likely it's not going to be a earthquake at the same time. It's likely that, you know, there's not going to be, you know, a, a general liability claim that's huge at the same time. So, you know, you spend the reserves you have to handle the risks that you're facing now. And then after that's over, then you build them back up and you prefer, prepare for the next risk. So, you know, based on the risks that we think we know about, you know, thirty-six million dollars would, would last us, I think, through most troubling spots.
It would last us about four months.
Well, that's only if we lost a hundred percent of our revenues.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, and that's not going to occur.
Then we would, we would pull back on street ma, you know, the massive street maintenance and stuff like that. We'd have to reevaluate what we're doing and just kind of tighten the belt all the way around.
Right. Because we have some fairly stable revenues. I mean, our property taxes, they call it a lagging indicator. The housing market can crash now, but you won't feel it for two years with property tax. We have our CFD services revenue, so that's very stable. That's going to go on. You know, housing development revenue will go down if the housing market goes down. But, so there's some less volatile revenues and, you know, so we're never going to see a complete stop of our revenues. So we're just going to have to cover the ones that are more volatile and depending on what's happening in the economy and, you know, so.
Reevaluate where we spend money.
Right.
Okay.
So Mayor, I was just going to comment that I'm, I was actually a part of the organizational leadership team during that time while you were on the council. And one of the things we did do is meet in these chambers and, and talk about different things that we could do to reduce costs during that recession. And some of that was not putting vehicles into the vehicle maintenance, you know, repair program that year, that some of those vehicles would remain, you know, into the cycle longer. Like you said, you know, dialing back on some of our street repairs during times of economic downturn. And it was just, there was no stone that, there's no stone, at least for this team that I saw, that went unturned.
Well, and our bargaining units were so good about just letting go and saying, as long as you don't lay anybody off, move people around. I mean, you really have to hand it to the employees and the bargaining units that just literally, you know, rolled up their sleeves and worked with us to make it work, which I really appreciate it.
Every single person, every single corner, I think, you know, pitched in at those points. And it was a difficult time, but, you know, in, in hindsight, it, it, you know, it made us stronger. You know, when we look at stuff like that, so. I, that's one of the things I appreciate about our staff and our, our bargaining units and everybody is they know they have to come to the table. And I remember at that time, everybody had to give, you know, and, and give deep, so. Just wanted to make that comment.
I personally am comfortable with six months reserve, but I know many of the council members really want to use this money and get some things done, deferred maintenance and street and that sort of stuff. So I, you know, it, it looks like we could safely go down to the four months, approximately four months, the thirty-six million, which would allow us two years of intense street repair and getting all of the parks upgraded with the information that was provided to us from Sylvia. And then taking Almer's recommendations and adding in the soft costs and other things that he talked about. So I'd like council input on that.
I, I'm good with the four months. I'm good with your liability of thirty-six million, taking into account that some things could cause an economic downturn. I, I am comfortable with, you know, looking at their, their suggested model and then obviously adding some, some additional funds to make sure that we're able to weather the storm. I mean, I, I know we won't lose all the revenue, but I think having, you know, between thirty-six and thirty-seven million would definitely help us prepare when it, when we see something like this coming, that we can, we can at least address it early enough that it doesn't, doesn't impact the city as much.
Other comments?
Now, this is a, the tale of two perspectives, right? I think one of the things that we as a city and our staff and, and quite frankly, Mayor, the, the legacy of your, your council and the, the members that sat here before have been proud of is our reserve fund. It's, it's something to be very proud of, that we've been able to be fiscally responsible and prudent in all of our projects and develop a very healthy financial, a, a reserve fund for the city of Chino. But on the flip side of the coin, some of that has come at the cost of us deferring maintenance in areas where we, where we really recognize now it's not benefiting us any longer to delay these projects because they're simply getting more expensive. So it would be, I mean, something as simple as, I know it's going to sound a little unusual, but like this, this community garden, you know, down the street. It, it's sad that that's been closed for, I didn't actually realize it's been eight years. And something I think could bring, you know, a lot of happiness and a lot of use. I, I mean, I know it would be, there's a cost associated with opening that, but it's like, once it's been closed for eight years, I think the community starts to lose hope that something like that will ever be reinstated. So I, I, even though it's hard to, again, I grew up in this, in this mindset as a, as an employee of the city of Chino for many years, that, hey, you know, every, every penny counts. I also think at one point, it tips the scale of our residents who are being denied repairs to roads and different community gems that they would like to see us take these, these revenues and reinvest it and repair things that they enjoy, including their streets and, and community gardens. But this begs the question, Mayor, I think, you know, where we're looking for some of your leadership on it is we have to have, I think, a discussion with our community about what it really takes to maintain all these facilities and how do we pay for it moving forward. I think part of what we're sitting here looking at is trying to get in, almost like having an honest talk with ourselves and our, and our residents about what it's going to take for us to properly operate and maintain our city, not just from an infrastructure and road and streets perspective, but also public safety perspective, the real costs that are coming our way in the future and how we pay for that and finance that and what the public's expectation of our service levels are moving forward, Mayor. So those are my comments.
Chris, any comments? Curtis?
I look at the numbers and it, it quite frankly makes me nervous to, I, I like the cushion, the six-month cushion myself, Mayor. But it makes me nervous to go down below that. And one of the main reasons is the instability, if you will, of the state of California and what they're going to do next. You know, imposing fees and regulations upon local entities that we have no control over other than to pay our end of it through our city coffers. And it's, it makes me nervous. I have been in the city for almost forty years. We've been very, very conservative, and that's a good thing. And it's worked for us. So for us to go down below that six-month level, again, it just, it, I, I understand the thought process behind it, and I don't disagree with it, but I reluctantly would agree with it, that we do need to get certain things taken care of. And it's very important that the sooner that we can get it done, the better because of the cost issues, and they are going to continue to go up, like the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, so. I, I think that, I think for the four-month level will be okay. Again, I, I, it makes me nervous to, to go down to that level. But I think that at this point in time, we need to probably really take a good look at that.
What I would like to suggest is, the budget has already been prepared to be brought to us. I would like, there's just not enough time to change it before now and when we adopt it. So what I would suggest is that you bring forward the budget the way it stands right now for adoption, and then immediately start to work and bring us back information in July that would include the intense street work for the first year and the second year and how it would impact the budget, how would, we would handle that for council consideration. It might be a workshop that we go into.
I'm thinking July might be too quick. And I know we're dark in August, so that might be a better conversation for September, if that's okay with the council. Because as we, as we look forward and if we're going to start looking at additional projects as they relate, I mean, we have our budget set for the next two years already, so we can start working on what that'll look like for twenty-six, twenty-seven, right? Because we've already put some of this money. So what Public Works can do, the, the community services project's already in the budget. Public Works can go back, and as they're looking at their projects, then they can start identifying that. I just think July would be too quick.
Well, I'm going to take exception to that because we're losing Almer. I mean, he's only going to be with us part-time. And I personally think that his ability to plan projects and getting things done is nothing short of genius. And I certainly, you didn't know you were a genius.
We, we agree with that.
But I, I think it would be very critical to have his input on this because he knows what's really needed inside and out. And if we delay Linda until September, he's not going to be with us. going to be with us.
Well, he will, and these will still be his projects.
Well, but I would like it at least to begin work.
We'll do a good faith effort, Almer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I think that, that would at least bring some information to us that we could seriously consider, and there may be other things within the streets, you know, like he had mentioned, if we really want to kick up the effort on, on alleys, you know, if you really want to start looking at the streetlights and the signs and the other things that are not pavement-specific. I mean, Almer obviously has an idea already of what all of that is, so I can't imagine that, that he wouldn't be able to put something together that could be brought to us in July to look at.
It's very simple, Mayor, Almer can't go home before he retires and gets his project.
I don't think he should be allowed to retire, I think we should adopt an ordinance that says he has to stay with us until death do us part. So, Almer, you don't get to retire. I wish.
Just kidding, Almer.
Me too. Anyway...
If I can just add one comment to address Councilmember Burton's concern about the state, the state is facing a, I don't know what it is today, a $32 billion deficit in their budget. However, many years ago, the California voters voted, I think it was Proposition 1A, which was protect local revenues, and so the League of California Cities feels fairly confident that the state isn't going to be able to make a grab at local agencies' money. And so I think, you know, unless, of course, the state's an 800-pound gorilla, things could change, but there's a California constitutional provision now that says that they can't grab city monies. So hopefully that gives a little comfort on going from the six months to the four months.
Well, I was listening to a news program today, as I was driving, and, and the governor is discussing again reparations, that could be $8 billion minimum, and he doesn't know how he'll pay it, but, but he's coming up with ideas, so our current governor, I don't think has, he has little respect for local government and what our needs are, and I think, I think the man will do whatever he feels like he wants to do, and we seem to have a legislature that will support him, so I agree with Curtis, I'm, California makes me nervous. Okay, any other questions or points to be made?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, the information we provided today, I just want you to know that your executive management team is hyper-focused on economic development, and we know that we've got a shortfall, and we're working on ways that we can increase that, our revenue generation through economic development. As a, as just a recap, so Mayor, you asked for information on what it would cost to reconstruct a, a lane.
Yeah.
So we'll get that number for you. We're going to look at solar for our pavilions and possibly other opportunities within our park buildings, our parks and our park buildings. It's, it sounds like we're all comfortable with the 36 to 37 million reserve.
Well, I, I wouldn't say two of us are totally comfortable with it, but...
The majority.
Yeah.
We'll say the majority. And our budget is already set for the next two years, so Public Works will look at what will, what will it take for us to enhance what we're doing with our public streets and alleys, and we will endeavor to bring that back to you second meeting in July. So at least we can have that discussion about what that cost would be, and again, if, if we decide we're going to increase or change something, that would be an action that would come back to the council.
Right.
Okay, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
No.
But Almer can't go home. And Almer can't leave.
It's really hard for someone not to be able to enjoy their family and retire, as much as we would love him here.
Okay, is there any input from the public, comments? Seeing none then, let's see, we will, oh, we're going to adjourn to a regular meeting that will be held on June 20th at 6 o'clock with closed session, no sooner than 4 o'clock if needed. We are adjourned. Okay.